Our Heavenly Father, we are gracious to you and we just look to you and awe at what you are and who you are and mercy and grace that you have for us. And thank you for our great town and we pray that as we make decisions for this town, we will play that's pleasing to you and deal with the financial aspects of the town. Pray that we'll make decisions that are even more responsible than if we're handling our own dollars. And Lord, as we look at a budget right now, it's a little bit tight. Just reveal the things to you, to us, that are wise. And we thank you for those who have rolled up their sleeves and worked hard to find the best presentation for us. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands. God in the midst.
Helping the old people, we appreciate that.
Okay, we got any public comments? No public comments. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There is no consent agenda take down to revenue projections.
Okay, so I want to first just give you a, let me get out of this. Quick overview of the budget. I have that on the screen here. This is our projected revenue this year for FY twenty-six, the upcoming budget is twelve point nine million dollars. Obviously, we've balanced it out so that our expenses are also twelve, our expenses were twelve point nine, we've balanced the budget, the revenue at twelve point nine as well. Several departments budgets went down individually. Administration went down by one hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Municipal court went down by twenty-five thousand and Parks and Rec by seventy-six thousand. Founder's Day budget went down by five thousand and Public Library went down by nine thousand. Overall, the budget was up by eight percent. A lot of that you'll see later in the day as the day progresses that these are projects such as the Pendleton Dam and carryover projects from FY twenty-five that we have to complete next year that are in various stages of progress. So that's the, that's the big overview of the budget. So revenue overview for our general fund, as I said, twelve million, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine oh seven seventy-two is our projection. This is seven million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents in taxes and fees. One point eight million of that is the Pendleton Dam, the grant for the Pendleton Dam. And then one point four million is assigned funds and projects carried forward from FY twenty-five. Most of that's going to be in the Public Works budget. And I have highlighted here that two, two million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and seven cents is surplus funding carried forward to balance the budget. I'll note that I did this last year and I've done it again this year. A quick analysis of our operating costs, it would be, it would cost about six point one million dollars just to run the town, just to pay our employees, pay our, our insurance, our utilities, keep the doors open and do minor maintenance. That's our, that's our general baseline cost is about six point one million dollars. At a baseline revenue of seven point two million dollars in taxes, that would give you about a million dollars to, to work with if you wanted to do projects and stuff other than just general maintenance. So that just kind of gives you a financial overview of where we are. It cost us, like I said, though, another two point four million dollars out of, out of reserve to balance the budget to do everything that we need to do. We've, we've used that model for several years now to balance out our budget. So just something to keep in mind. This two point four million that we carried forward equals a three point seven four mil increase or a total millage rate of six point six two nine mils if we were to be operating under a model where our millage rate covers our, or balances our budget. So six point six is close to the state average for a city of our size and close to the state average in general. So that kind of gives you an idea of where we are as far as millage. Our millage at two point eight eight nine is grossly under where we should be as a town of our size.
So, so if we were to, if we were at six point six two nine and our budget remained at this twelve point nine here, that would be?
No, that, that would only give you the two point four million dollars that was required to balance the budget.
Thank you.
So we would still be, yeah, dependent on those, not the, not the, the carry forward for balancing the budget, but we would still, you know, we would still have to be careful with what we were doing.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah. But that just gives you another glimpse of the financial picture of where we are. So we are operating as if our millage rate were six point six two nine while we're pulling those funds out of, out of our surplus. Obviously, that model's not sustainable long term. Our property tax estimate this year is two million, six thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-one cents, which is a one hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar increase over last year. As you'll remember, House Bill five eighty-one will cap assessments at the rate of inflation. That number, that two million dollar number considers House Bill five eighty-one, but remember that House Bill eight, five eighty-one only caps homestead properties. So we looked at the average increase over the last five years of non-homestead properties and commercial and we factored in that growth into this number and capped homestead at the, I believe, two percent or three, I think we went with two percent to be conservative. So.
Why not at three?
We wanted to be, I wanted to be conservative. I wanted, I wanted, it could be three percent. The state revenue commissioner could say we're going to go with three percent as the rate. We don't know yet. So we know inflation's somewhere between two and three percent. So I went with two percent just to be conservative, just to say, you know, that, that's a safe number. No, it's based at the rate of inflation. And they can use, there, there's no set parameter for what they have to use to determine that, but what we think that they're going to use is the CPI. So, but yeah, we're somewhere between two and three percent. So the two percent was a safe number. Just, so, all right. Our top ten sources of revenue, funds carried forward is our number one, which is not a good thing. Two million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and forty dollars and seven cents. Lost revenue, two point three million, projected property taxes, again, two million, the federal grant for Pendleton Dam, one point eight million. Funds carried forward from this current fiscal year to next year, one point one seven nine million. Insurance premium tax, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Ad valorem, title and ad valorem tax, four hundred thousand. Electric franchise, three hundred and fifty thousand. Street resurfacing, state grant, three hundred and one thousand. And assigns, assigned funds, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So you can see, we have over three million dol, almost four million dollars in funds carried forward to make this budget work. Our personnel budget is projected at four point six million dollars, four point seven, might as well say, which is a one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar increase over fiscal year twenty-five. This includes a council discussed three percent pay increase for all employees, an additional two percent for our public works field employees, an anticipated fifteen percent increase in our medical insurance. I'll note that we, we budgeted for that increase last year or the current year and it, it was not realized. So we continue to carry that forward anticipating at least a fifteen percent increase in our medical costs. It also includes the new full-time code enforcement position that was discussed at the workshop a couple of months back in March. If council decides not to go forward with the three percent pay increase, the personnel budget would be four point five seven one million, which is about ninety-one thousand less than, than the, with the three percent. Obviously, personnel continues to be our highest cost. All right, that was, that was a quick overview of the revenue. Are there any questions on that before I go on to the admin budget?
I would like to go back to the first slide if I could. Um. Didn't matter. It was the one that it had each department.
Oh, I get what you're saying.
Increase.
Uh, yeah, I got you.
There we go. I don't want to run the risk of us going line by line and picking everything apart. If we can look at this slide and see it, at the percent change and ask why, it looks like there are only three departments where you would say, well, that, this is why you're looking at a, at a fifteen point seven or, or nineteen point six or, or twenty point seven increase. Is there a two-sentence explanation for those three? And if there is, it'll keep us from feeling like we have to pick apart every single line item.
Yeah. I know, I can't speak for Sandy's budget, I can't remember exactly there, so I'll let her talk on that. The police department budget, the biggest change there is we combined public safety admin, which, which contained all the costs associated with the major and the chief's salaries, their fuel, their vehicle maintenance, everything, every line item in the police budget was, was mirrored in the police admin budget. It was just broken out. And that was a, that was something we've been doing for years, even going back to when I was the chief. And it was a, it was something that was in the GFOA standards, I believe, am I correct? That, that we were doing for a time, but we, we, we reread the standard and determined that this was not a requirement for us because I can't find another city that's, that's doing it that way. So to make things cleaner, we just combined public safety admin with public safety under one department. So you can see last year, the public safety admin budget was three fifty-five, eighty-seven, And we just moved all of those, all those numbers into the public safety budget. So that, that speaks for that one.
And it, it adds one or two positions into that number.
It, it only includes the new position that you guys approved last July. So we, we did the whole, you know, discussions a couple of months ago about that. So it includes the, the new position added last July. And then, like I said, the public safety admin budget has moved into the public safety. So that's a big one, that's, that's three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Public Works is, as I said, a good bit of that is the Pendleton Dam. That project, we, we expect to do seven, at least seventy-five percent of that project this fiscal year. So that's a lot. There were several other projects that were started in FY twenty-five that we've carried the funds forward to twenty-six so we can complete those projects. And Scott can elaborate more on that. And then Phillip, I'll let Phillip and Sandy elaborate on their budgets. Sandy, go ahead with seventeen thousand.
Yeah, mine is a lot because we reduced the amount of personnel costs that we're going to, the sewer. So that, that brought it down quite a bit as far as it brought up the personnel costs because a lot of more was going to sewer last year and we have reduced that. Mine also is mainly because most of my department is mainly created from ADP charges and ClearGov and the accounting systems. And they have increases every year, so I don't have a choice but to put the rates up for that. And I just don't have a lot of other fat in my budget, to be honest, because we don't do a whole lot in finance. You know, a little bit of supplies here and there, but I didn't have a lot of places to cut.
That, that does bring up the sewer enterprise fund and how that worked in the past as far as putting some administrative costs in that. Could you just explain that to give us an overview?
Yes, sir. So, yeah, as Sandy talked about, we, in the past, several positions, mine included, Sandy, Scott, Phillip, no, Mitch, Devon, several spots had a portion, a percentage of their salary covered. We tried to match, you know, what percentage of their work went to, and I, I can't remember what mine was, but it was, it was very high. It was, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't spend fifteen percent of my time focused on, on sewer. So, but anyhow, that's, that's how that worked. We tried, and so we sat down, several of us sat down in my office a couple of weeks ago and tried to come up with a better formula. And so we adjusted those numbers partly because, you know, the sewer enterprise fund is not seeing the revenue that it could be seen based on our sewer fees and usage and things like that. So we, we're having to make changes everywhere so that we can make all this work. So that, that's kind of where we are on that. And I can, I can log in and give you all the specific percentages if y'all, but, okay.
I promise not to take too much time on this.
Yes, sir. A, a big portion of my budget is anticipating permits. So we, as permits come in, we have a percentage of them that go out back to SafeBill. So it comes in as revenue, but it has to go back out as a now updated seventy percent expenditure. We have two big buildings that might potentially drop in next fiscal year with East Group. Each one of those permits is close to sixty to seventy thousand dollars apiece. So that has to be reflected as at least seventy percent or, or so of that money has to go back to SafeBill for their fee. We're also anticipating the neighborhood behind us to start construction. So at least, I would say probably thirty to forty percent of those homes could be constructed or at least permits pulled and paid for next FY. So with an increase in permits and within an increase in construction, we have to increase that budget. So that's where ninety-nine percent of that is. Some of that's in the new code enforcement position as well, but we made reductions in other line items to try and balance that portion out. But the permits are really what drives that.
All right, y'all comfortable with that? Okay. All right, getting to the department level. And again, if, if, if we're going too deep or not deep enough, let us know. This is, this is y'all's opportunity to see what we've put together and let us know if we're on track with what y'all's goals are for, for the town. So please let me know or let all of us know what's going on with your thoughts. All right, just a real quick, brief overview of the admin budget, and this talks about decreases as well. So I've reduced my budget by one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. There was an individual line item increase under the subscription-based software, Sabita. We decided to take, or I decided to take all the VC three charges, which is our IT and internet security, all those fees out of the department budgets and just put them under admin like we do with our, with our email and all that. That's just an admin function. So we've, we've moved all that over and adjusted the departmental budgets to commensurate with that. I took seventy-five thousand out, I had seventy-five in there for, I had that money in there for this current year for the improvements to the Clark property. So that funding is no longer needed, so that came out. Ten thousand was removed under the municipal complex line item. Fifty thousand was removed. I, I requested a vehicle last year and y'all know how we worked that out with the truck. So that was out. And then we, we have historically carried fifty to a hundred thousand dollars for contingencies in the admin budget. This is for emergencies or, as it says, contingencies. Sandy and I discussed that and it's a, it's one of those things where if we need fifty thousand dollars in contingency, it's probably a, an emergency or probably something bad has happened. And in, in that case, we can spend that funding under the, under the emergency provisions of our purchasing policy or we could come to you all for a budget amendment. So carrying that fifty thousand dollars just inflates the budget unnecessarily. So we decided to take that out as well. That is really all I, I have for the admin budget. It's, you know, it's, 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 one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars isn't nothing, but it's, it's not huge, but it, it's, it's not nothing. So I was glad to be able to take those numbers out of there. Yeah, that, that does include the three percent of those.
He's for it.
Oh, it, absolutely, absolutely. That's a, that's a good way to look at it. Yeah, I hadn't considered it that way. Yep. That's all I have for admin unless there are any questions. Next up should be finance. Yep, finance. And I'll just pull her budget up here on the screen.
Okay, as I stated, I've got major software stuff and finance and that's really a lot of the majority of my costs, other than, of course, obviously, personnel is the most. So I have the accounting software, Tyler Technologies, and the ClearGov, which is our budgeting software where we pull all these numbers, and ADP, which does all of our payroll stuff. And as I stated, those go up every year. So those are the majority of my costs. I did cut out, I believe, a little bit in travel and education and training and dues and fees. I did bring those down just a little bit, but I still left some in there for some, some travel and education as needed. Small equipment, now that I have a new employee and the new employee and I both got new computers last year, I don't think, hopefully, everything will crash on us. So I took out a bunch of money from small equipment. And auditing services, I did have to increase auditing services because it's with the dam coming in for the Pendleton Dam, it's very possible that's federal money and if we spend seven hundred and fifty thousand or more, we'll have to do a single audit. That's going to cost us more money. So I've increased the audit services for that in anticipation of we might have a single audit. That's pretty much my budget unless somebody has questions.
I have a question. It's not specifically for you Sandy, but throughout every department, there's significant increase to workers' comp and to group, group life insurance. And I know you guys were speaking with, I believe, the Harbin Agency, maybe, looking at some savings, but workers' comp to increase that much, was there a reclassification?
No, that was, that was me making a mistake on the, Sandy pointed it out to me this morning and we back, we're actually going to fix it.
Okay.
I forgot to actually, I'm glad you brought that up because I actually, I actually forgot to say that. So I've pulled up the personnel budget here on the screen and you're right, the, it did go up exponentially or, or pretty much doubled. The actual number there should be seventy-nine, sixty-five. So that was just me, I made a mistake in ClearGov. It's kind of finicky and we're still getting used to it, so that was my mistake. And then what was the other one? Workers' comp. I'm going to double check that one too because I, I had told Sandy I saw another one that I thought needed to be readjusted down and I couldn't find it after I had said something to her. So we're going to look at both of those numbers, but you're, you're absolutely right, the, the group life anyway, almost doubled.
Yeah, and I know workers' comp did go up, but I don't remember it going up that much. So I think there's an error there as well.
Yeah, we're going to look at that.
But we haven't had a chance to finish looking at it.
Yeah.
So will that result in a, a, a total decrease in the?
Just about, like, as of right now, you know, this, it would result in a seven thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollar decrease in the overall budget and whatever workers' comp would be, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're going to read, after this meeting, we'll take y'all's input from this. We'll go back over the next couple of weeks because we have to now start advertising for the, the public hearings and everything. So we'll, we'll rework the numbers based on feedback from today and errors found like this. And then we'll, we'll send you guys the, the new revisions, updated numbers, and then we'll advertise for the public hearings.
Also, I want to say, workers' comp did probably increase a lot because we had that big salary adjustments that we've done in the last year or two. And what we do is we pay workers' comp upfront with an estimated figure. And then after the year is over, at the beginning of the next year, they go back and they re-audit exactly what we've paid out in salaries and that almost always increases then. And then they charge us extra. So you're probably seeing some extra increases in workers' comp just because they're catching up with what we've now, or have started paying employees.
Any other questions on the finance budget? I believe court is next.
I'm just going to kind of go through a brief overview of kind of where I made my deductions from and any increases that I had. Otherwise, the other line items that pretty much. Under legal services, I reduced it a hundred and fifty dollars just based off of the last five years analyzing the expenses I've spent out of legal services and felt like that was sufficient. Dropping them down to court-appointed attorney, that is our public defender services based off of how many public defender cases we've had. Cost as well and felt that it was necessary that I could reduce it a thousand and fifty dollars based on the number of cases that we have. Technical services, I reduced nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. A good chunk of that was because of the open record requests that we used to get from Experian and other places that were trying to use mass open record requests and we would have to spend all the money upfront to compile them. Now our software actually does it for us, just one click of a button, so we don't have to have all that. I felt like that was a much-needed decrease there. The Sabita, as Brandon had already discussed, all of our Sabita was for VC three and that went into the admin budget, so therefore it came out of our budget. Rental of equipment and vehicles, I reduced by five hundred dollars based off of copier expenses and what we. A cushion there to have for any reason because nothing ever. In travel, I did increase that by one thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars just based off the cost of living going up and the cost of mileage and things and that such as part is what the PDAM rate is. Continue on down to dues and. I itemized that out and when I itemized that out, it only made sense to reduce that by a hundred and seventy dollars based off of what we pay for. Education and training, I increased that by five hundred and ninety dollars. The conferences and things that we are mandated by the state to go to have increased in cost as well. Some of them used to be like three fifty, they've gone up to like. Accommodate for those changes. I left office supplies and postage the same. With postage, it kind of works out hand in hand because the police hasn't. Under gasoline and diesel, I dropped five hundred dollars there because per the town's travel policy, we are now, they have redone the town policy to not give us gas anymore and only give us mileage. So therefore, that's where that five hundred dollars decrease came away from as far as like when we travel. The books and periodicals, I had to raise that forty-five dollars based off of cost of expenses. And then other supplies, I dropped a hundred and fifty dollars just because I felt like that was a appropriate number to drop as far as the expenses that I have had in the past couple of years.
I just have a statement. Thank you for your recommendation last time for that new software that was able to compile all of that information without us having to spend nineteen thousand dollars. That was brilliant on your part.
Just on just way, I mean, it's only costing us six thousand dollars a year, but I mean, yes, our open records have increased drastically on the PD side, but it's very efficient and effectively and the time to process the open record request is gone from like.
I appreciate you.
So I just appreciate y'all approving it because a lot of towns and municipalities don't understand software can make a huge difference if it's used effectively and efficiently.
Thank you.
Under, under your court-appointed attorney, you had dropped a $2,050, but that was based on?
So what I do is it's $410 a case for a court-appointed attorney. And they have to be approved for that based off of the poverty guideline. So I always just had a number in there of how many cases we would have like in a year. And we've not reached that max. So I dropped it from 20 cases to 15. Save $2,000 because we've only had about eight to 10 cases on average in the last three years. So I just felt like it would be effective to be able to do that.
I'm just concerned that if you had reached, overreached it, that you would have.
Yeah, and I don't think that would be a huge problem. Most we've had in a year is 10. And so I already, I already had doubled it to 20. So I just dropped it to 15. So I still have a cushion there. And I mean, if for some reason something happens and we have to have more than that in my small equipment line item, I don't, I plan on trying to have to buy anything unless I have to. So I still have some cushion just to balance it out.
Travel is for two of you?
Yes, sir. I attend three conferences a year, which one is the Georgia Attack Association Conference, which is always usually held in Savannah or either Jekyll Island. And then. Both have to attend the ICJ. All right, thank you.
Next up is PD.
Good morning.
Good morning, chief. About a $50,000 cut in my budget overall. The other part of that cut is going to be. Back over the last couple of years in knowing. That meant we felt. Aside from that, I'm looking for two vehicles. The, the next and last thing I want to tell you. Loss money, I believe from. That will be used at 60. Uh, for clarification, you did add the chaplaincy and the wellness, officer wellness. Budgeted $5,000. Four of those thousand. Equestrian providers in that. How much will we save with having the training center in Fayetteville? Talking about gas and wearing terror. More than the expenses. Chief, are they doing, um, just basic mandate? Are they doing other classes, certification classes like hip stick would do? Like advanced report writing, things like that? So far it's just the basic account. Oh, but no, the basic. Officer survival.
All the acronyms here.
What's the?
Thank you.
I was talking to Brandon for a second. Made perfect sense to me. Vehicle operations, that's where they. OC is the, is the pepper. All individual classes that you have to be. Or to perform those. Sorry, I. All right. All right, y'all have a great day.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Up should be playing for.
Morning, council.
Morning.
Um, so the public works budget, as you can see, there was a 19.62% increase and as Brandon said earlier, most of that's a result of the carryovers. The 1.8 million for the dam and 1.4 million for the carryovers. Most of that carryover comes from the 2025 asphalt resurfacing project, which fell about a month short in meeting its schedule for bidding. So we're not going to get that work performed. So almost all of that's going to go into next FY. Taking those two things out though, you can see that we would, we would be about 20% or more of a reduction in our budget from public works. So we've cut a lot of places. There are a couple of places where you may see some increases. Once again, if you look at the road paving repair, keep in mind that that has a $900,000 carryover for the resurfacing project. There was a slight increase to the engineering services. That was for us to be able to make that transition from not having an environmental specialist to when we can get an environmental specialist. And we are working on that currently. And it is moving in a good, what we think is a good direction. But if you go back to the second page, I mean, it's, it speaks at all. The Pendleton Dam, it's a 1,700% plus percent increase in the budget. And that's where all this increases that you're seeing. So we've made some real strides to reduce. We have, just, you know, full transparency, we have some things that we're reducing. I feel in our level of service, we're not going to do preventive maintenance under this budget and some things like that. But we're doing most of the things that we need to do. We're definitely doing the things we, we absolutely need to do. And we are, some things like the Handley Pole Barn building, it was another carryover project that we're doing. So we're, we're making good stride, but that's why you're seeing it as actually an increase because of the dam and the carryovers.
Scott, um, I know you said you took a lot of preventative maintenance out for the budget, which is fine, but what would you, what's your best guess or, or best estimate of how much annual preventative maintenance we would have to do just to, you know, to live in an optimum place in Tyrone?
That's a great question and that takes a lot of calculations to figure out. And one of the reasons why I hope eventually we might be able to move into an asset management system. But I was looking at about $300,000 this year. Basically to do some micro-surfacing on Castlewood and some other places like that. They're getting to that point where it's a good time to catch them before they degrade too far that we can't do something like that. That would extend the life of those about 10. Some of the less traveled ones, maybe 15 years. The Castlewood probably extra 10 years. So as you know, we're shifting, when you do that, you're shifting that degradation curve out and moving it forward. And when you pick up 10 years, that's a huge deal because normally when you reach the point where you would mill and pave it, which is about 12, 13 years into it, you know, that range, you're picking up 10 years. If you don't do that in about three to five years, you're going to be dealing with what is basically FDR. So your prices, your prices keep going up more and more and more. They're not little jumps. It doesn't, doesn't go from like $20 a square, square yard to 25. It goes like 20 to 30. So they're, they're, you know, big steps. So it's an important thing for us to do and get into. And we've positioned ourselves to do that. We've raised our PCI from 75.1 back in 2016 up to 85. So we've made great progress with that.
Thank you.
Scott, why is there nothing for the mini roundabout?
So the mini roundabout is on this form just because it's, what was done within the last, I don't know, five or seven years that the data goes back before it gets removed. The mini roundabout was actually a study we did to determine whether we needed the mini roundabout or whether we needed a large roundabout. And that's been completed and that's why there's no funds in that. The roundabout project is in the 2017 SPOLOST, which we'll discuss at that time.
It's in the budget for this year, it's just not under the public works, it's under SPOLOST.
Correct.
Can I ask another project question? I, I've had a couple of conversations both with commissioners and with Phil Mallon about Tyrone Road from 54 to 74.
Yes, sir.
Because of all of the truck traffic, at least for the next couple of years. And there's a mutual agreement that something's going to have to be done. Based on my experience, there's more damage in the county than there is in Tyrone. But can, can you have a conversation with, with Phil Mallon to get an idea for what they're thinking?
Yes, sir, we've actually been discussing this because they've been talking about it being a tip project. They started talking about that in 2024, the latter part of 2024. Our conversation at the time was that since Tyrone had done a tip from the previous time to pave, was that it didn't make sense for us to repave our section on actual Tyrone Road. There is some on Palmetto Road that may, may be suited for that. But that was one of the things we looked at doing a micro-surface or one of those kind of preventive maintenances in our section in order to extend the life of it. We're going to have a reduced probably input in the tip. And I will talk to him again because there, there may be some other things. Like if we're going to do that, then maybe, maybe he would also be willing to add Castlewood into that or one other, the road, or maybe Sonoya Road or something like that. Because, you know, it takes about three or four years for those to go through. So we may, I'll talk to him and see if there isn't a way to set that. I'm not sure where they are in that process though with the tip. It doesn't sound like they're very far if they're talking to you at that, you know, kind of that still scoping phase.
Our discussion was centered around the key act.
Okay, will do.
But just, just one point with the Palmetto Road portion of it, with the intended construction of the roundabout and the new housing project that's going there. You wouldn't, you wouldn't do any of that until after that would be completed.
Yes, sir, like I say, it, it does take, you know, three, four years to get through the process and actually get into construction. I mean, the, the Dogwood project we're doing now, I think, started in 2022, somewhere around there, one, two, three, somewhere in that range. So it's been a few years and we're just now getting to the construction. So we should be complete with all that by that time.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, line 65 stormwater and pond improvements, $180,000. What's that increase?
I'll repeat the, the line item again.
It's 65 on the spreadsheet on the screen, Scott. It's, it's going to be probably the seventh from the, from the end of your budget.
Thank you.
Seventh or eighth.
Stormwater and pond improvements for $180,000, that is towards Shamrock Dam. It's part of the culvert Shamrock Dam project.
Not the tree removal and the root removal, just the culvert?
No, they're still doing the design part of that. So some of the design will come out of the, the budgets that we have here. But that probably won't start construction. So the majority of that big money is not, not there yet. And that's also going to be covered some by SPOLOST.
Is zeroing out completely of cart paths and streetscape merely to save money that we don't have? And not, not to spend money we don't have, right?
So the gateway and streetscape was the Gunnin project that was completed. The rest of the streetscaping is part of an LCI potential grant and SPOLOST.
Yeah, we've, we've shifted most of anything that we were having in general fund to SPOLOST for that.
Okay, great.
The, um. Have we heard from CSX's engineer about the trees?
But speaking of CSX, that's also in our, in my road budget. This is about the timeframe that they normally do northeast, or excuse me, East Crestwood, right there at Northeast Crestwood on Paper Road. Last time we did that, I think it was 16, 17,000, somewhere in that range. So we put some money in there for that because we expect that to come around.
Scott?
Thank you.
Covering for Linda.
Parks and Rec.
Morning.
Morning.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, I'm just going to go down through the general fund first and. Why we've done what we've done. No change in legal. Uh, technical services has. There was a revised note for sound for two different events. As part of a fireworks package that we. All of the fireworks for the. Founder's Day and America 250. Fireworks, thus our Christmas fireworks was lowered. Five to 13.
Okay, we did include the, the cost for America 250 in this budget, right? I didn't know if there would be any, any pre-pays or, or deposits or. I'd forgotten how we did that. Okay, thank you.
Special program services has decreased. $1,000 to 30. With this. Roughly, we're still getting quotes on that. Roughly, they're going to be about 12. Also still getting quotes. Also still getting quotes on that we are planning to get actions. So they, I rode around. Actually needs to be, um, taken care of right away. Act and has a hole. So, um, we were advised. Washing tape put around. Though we haven't got this, um, section, uh, back to us yet with all of the details. Playground at Red Wine is testing desperately. Advised for us to have that dismantled. At where this playground is currently of correct terracing with so all of it just runs down into the gazebo. And so it's just other thing that's a big deal with that. Concrete footings of the apparatus and that's dangerous for the children. So, um, we have been advised to I wanted to wait until got the official document. Cost of dismantling and have. Um, and so I thought that would be fair and uh, the other thing that really needs to have mulch replacement in all of the playgrounds. Whether or not it needs to be fully, um, excavated or just top. Topper for it where the underneath is not taken. But there are some playgrounds that actually need that after we hear from that. Um, find quotes.
Christie, is there a recommended, uh, you know, timeframe for remulching for playgrounds?
That is going to be something that
Thank you.
Um, Christie, have, have, have you guys looked into, I know, uh, when Rebecca was here a couple of years ago, she went through the process to get certified to inspect playgrounds. And I know the cost to do this was five thousand, six thousand dollars. What is the cost in the process for one of you to get certified to do that for us?
I would actually like to get. I was advised to actually, and this is in I was advised to first get have looked into five thousand dollars in how much it costs to maintain it if there's
The, the equipment you talked about at Red Wine is, and having that removed, that equipment is the original equipment that's been there. Is it worth keeping? Or if we decide to take that out of there and then just, you know, grade and do whatever we have to that particular area and, and then decide at some point in the future to put new equipment in elsewhere? Would it be worth it? I think it would behoove us to purchase new equipment and place it in there. So, uh, that being the case, couldn't our guys just remove that stuff out of there? I mean, and as opposed to having somebody come and demo it? Uh, I mean, that would save us some money and then that could just be scrapped.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Public Works.
And the, the cost of the mulch in the past, what has that been for us? Do you know that off the top of your head, close to it?
I believe around
So you have the smaller area at Hanley and then of course Shamrock is the bigger park. And then you Red Wine, not Red Wine, Dorth, uh, the, the dog park place. Thank you.
And then Dorothy Arria.
Age, and I know there's an area there. Do, am I missing any others?
If the playground at, um, Red Wine is as we have money and if we have lost, um, have you, uh, we might be able to use some of that money or just Red Wine. In the meantime, I do believe it would be
Well, terracing, terracing creates another safety issue because then you've got kids jumping off walls and possibly you really need a flat area that you can create a playground that they don't have to deal with that. Agreed.
What, what about, um, number thirty-two on here, stormwater and pond maintenance, fifteen thousand? What do, what do we do? What does?
That, that is sort of Serena. Linda just left that because left it as is, just in case.
Scott?
Is that for that, that drainage pond that's over there, Scott?
Uh, yes, ma'am. That could go to any of the ponds on any of the, of the parks. But, um, we have some money in our budget also to do the, the big pond clearings and things like that. But I can see this kind of money being used to support the irrigation pond that we're trying to get redoing over at Hanley. And if there's other small drainage issues, um, like a pipe in the park or something like that that has a sinkhole around it or something like that, that, that could also be funding for those things.
And this area that Christie was just talking about in terms of regrading for stormwater, if we have to reroute, it would probably, could be used for that as well.
I, I have, I have a question for Phillip. So I know in the past, uh, we apply for a grant for the playground in Shanley Park, uh, excuse me, in Shamrock Park. The big beautiful playground that, that is used all the time now. Would you consider like applying for another playground grant for that park? That, so that we don't actually have to spend all of our money on a new playground over there?
I mean, any, any grants that come available that look like they're feasible for us to, to pursue? And we've got some matching, usually matching funds that can be put towards that. I mean, we're, we're always looking out for those types of things. So, um, I, I haven't, I haven't personally seen one come around. Uh, my, my grant feed is a little bit different than directly Parks and Rec. But if we see one come around, we, uh, we'll definitely look at it and see if it's feasible or viable for us to apply.
Okay.
The, the Shamrock Park playground was kind of a low hanging fruit. It was, it was actually a COVID recovery funds CARES Act funding.
Okay.
So we didn't actually have to apply for that. It was just a, that was a portion of our funding from CARES Act was to replace a hundred and fifty thousand, I think is what we used, but to replace that, that playground. So, yeah, but there, we can certainly look and see what kind of, uh, specific things are available for that.
Yeah, I just remember it being kind of costly. And I know if we're talking about demo and something and putting something new back, that could be pricey. And if there's funding out there available, we would love to use it.
Definitely.
Thank you.
I, I talked to Linda. Those two, um, so, um, so I'm really excited about that because that will keep us in the loop on a state level for what, what they do with Parks. Um, the education, uh, this goes back to the class. Program supplies, so our spring festival. Brought back. I mean, those kids sucked up. Really didn't have a place to hide them. Park and those, I think I inhaled time, those eggs were gone. However, so we got good feedback on that.
About how many, uh, kids did you think actually attended the spring?
Had at least a hundred and filled out sheets now. One thing that happened was, um, accommodate the sheets. So it doesn't matter how many you print out. So, um, what we did was we said onto our booth, to the recreation booth. Onto our holiday decorations. Last year, Got all those decorations.
Linda did call me earlier this week and she said that, I think she said there were 16 whole decorations, I'm not sure what they are, but that are not going to come in until July. At that point, it has to be in this budget. Do we know that we have money in this budget? Is that going to take away from what you plan on doing with it? If these 16 are going to be out of this budget? I just want to make sure you understand. No, that's fine. I just want to make sure you realize that it will come out of next year's budget now, if it doesn't show up until July 1st or after. Council's public hearing is not until, I don't have the date, June 16th or something?
We'll go over that in a minute.
Okay.
It's the first meeting in June, we're just going to go on that schedule.
Oh, it's the first meeting? The second?
Oh, the public, the approval?
The public hearing. We would have to know before the public hearing. If at all possible. Budget, well, I mean, I have to know what the amounts are so that...
Oh, you mean to get it into the budget?
Right, so that we can, yes. Yes.
A lot of people, and I get... Having to tell people this.
Yes, yes, please.
Can I ask you a question just before we leave this spreadsheet? What are sites? What is the...
That was, so we had $30,000 in there this year for the resurfacing of the courts across the street. And so that project's done, so that funding comes out.
Why do we call it sites?
Yeah, it's literally like the site. It's a site.
Park maintenance?
Right, but it's, it's not a ma... Well, it is a maintenance thing, but this is a capital, right. It's not a maintenance item, it's a capital improvement. So it's a different terminology for accounting purposes.
No, I was going to ask the same question.
Glad I could help you guys out with this.
That is for founders, that is to balance the Founder's Day budget. And some adjustments were made this year and it doesn't look like we're going to need to do a transfer out for Founder's Day this year.
And I'll speak on that in just a second. So for America 25. Got to come up with a budget of $35,000 for this. Already have fireworks for it, package deal that I was speaking about. And that is $12,000. And that's wonderful because this is happening on July 4th and that we've already got these booked. Yay! The fireworks deposit, that's going to be paid now, but it's going to be. That will go under. Have that light on here if you need that. The band hasn't been locked in yet. We do have an idea, thanks to. Already been in touch with him, he says he'd be happy. Process to book him.
Who, pardon me, who was that again?
It was Adam Grant, isn't it? Adam Grant. And he's fabulous, I listened to him. I'm proud that you got, that you sent him to us. I was like, okay, this guy's good. So we've already been in touch with him and reviewed his site, all his music. And he...
He is very excited to do it.
I'm so glad, I'm so glad, that's wonderful. So that, we still got to get that worked in. So our remaining balance thus far is 17,000. I was just going to go over Founder's Day. Have decreased this. And we wanted to. Tell you the ways in which we have decreased its. By Founder's Day, so we won't have to. Also decrease the. Acrobatics, you know, magic show, those sort of things. I just wanted to make a note. Last year, we had about. 5,318. About $1,500. I asked Linda what. The budget this year at 56.
Christie, I would like to say that Founder's Day is kind of one of those things in my mind that is, it's not something that we should be trying to break even on. It has been a staple in our community for a long, long time. Our citizens come out, they really support it. It's the most supported event that we have in Tyrone. The parade is fantastic, the entertainment in the park is fantastic. People know and expect and put on their schedules that week in October, they know it, the banner goes up, people get excited about it. And I just, you know, I'm just, I get so elated about it. And I'm just hopeful that we can continue to make it, you know, bigger and better each year. And hopefully, those increased sponsorships that you're talking about can help to add to the pizzazz that our program has each year.
Comfort you and letting you know that we have, we did a package deal that we put out to bid and it has a whole lot of, we're getting the biggest. Through amusement master. Addus that we have, you know, zip line. Our program for Founder's Day. So I just wanted to. That's already been taken care of.
Christie, am I, do I understand correctly you're not having any activities on that Friday night?
That is. Having our action wrestling. We are also thinking about having a car show. I like for the. I like for them to look at the park. I want them to pull into. That will hopefully do that for them.
Now, with the way that the economy is and think, what are our guarantees that you're going to get those sponsors to actually? I mean, you're spending 58, 57,000 rounding it off here, I think. Now, I mean, that's a lot of money to spend for an eight-hour program.
Every year, our sponsorships have gone up. Last year was the highest that we've ever had. Right budget. The more they get their name out there, the hopefully. Also. Have a more of a personal connection with them. Sending an email, you know, with a letter and this and that. There are ways to do it. That I feel that you can go to. What Founder's Day is and why. That's a change that I really think will. Order to do that, they have to. Founder's Day that's worthy of that.
What's your revenue number? Your sponsorship revenue number?
Forty five thousand.
And.
What we brought in.
That was your gross.
I'll just append to that, that um, we've had some business growth in Tyrone, especially over the past year or two. We've had about a half a dozen different new bit, like buildings go up with different tenants that are, you know, they're, they're decent sized businesses and we'll continue to see those. So there's gonna be a little bit more opportunity to kind of, you know, approach businesses too as we.
So if you were to get the forty, that would only cost us twelve thousand dollars then.
I think you're gonna. Eric's bold prediction. I think, I think you're gonna. Over fifty thousand dollars.
I aim to do that. It was my goal um, to have it all paid for um. This year, now I'm really uh, challenged to do it and I'll, I'll be doing a little jig if, if. Not only match, but go, go beyond. I'll just be really proud of that, so.
Forward to the jig.
Thank you so much.
Christie, remind me to give you somebody's name.
What you're saying, remind me to give you some money.
I had to man.
And also, am I asking you, just while I'm up here, just do.
Thank you for um, being available to get these certifications, not only to save us money, but most of all to provide a more excellent events, park. Um, you know, just maintaining them in a better manner instead of waiting for a inspection biannually or never, or something that gets overlooked. I appreciate that and your thinking out of the box and not just, you know, there's, there's a place for tradition, but there's also a place for thinking out of the box and doing new things. So thank you. And Linda.
And your commitment to do, be better at your job. That's, that's what that's all about.
I have a plan. I have a, I have a timeline.
Thank you, Christie.
Thanks.
All right. Patty.
Come on down. Mine's gonna be short and sweet. This year's budget, if you look at um, line item five, two, one, three, five, zero, it's special program services. That went from thirty five hundred dollars down to fifteen hundred dollars. Um. Those are the performances that we book for summer reading. Then that um, uh, lowered that cost is because the friends of the library usually. One or two of the performances. Um, so we should be in good shape for next year, next summer. Um, the next item that I cut uh, was three thousand dollars on equipment repair. That's line item five, two, dot, two, two, zero, two. That went from six thousand to three thousand. Um, this year, we've had one service call from EMC. The previous year, we had costs of two thousand fifty six dollars and thirty one cents in service calls. So I'm optimistic that um, don't have any significant equipment that we have to replace. Um. Most significant change is line item fifty three point one four zero one. That's book purchases. That went from twenty five thousand dollars down to fifteen thousand dollars and there's several reasons uh, why that has been cut so significantly. First of all, the most expensive um, items that we order are audio visuals. That's your um, books on CD. The newer automobiles do not have the technology. They don't have CD players. So I've been slowing down ordering those items. Also, space is becoming an issue. How's all of the um, collection? Uh, we've also requested that any state funds that we have go towards the purchase of titles that can be downloaded either through um, Libby, Overdrive, or the Palace Project, so folks can download those. Um, also, I've experienced issues with a book vendor. There've been lots of delays this year. It started in January where some of those titles that I've ordered have been canceled. And I normally order items two to three months in advance before the publishing date so that I can get those in a timely manner, but those have been delayed. They are negotiating with their publishing houses, so that's also gonna cause some delays. So um. I felt like looking at where we are right now with our book expenditures to where I project that we'll be in June. Um, I feel comfortable that we'll still be able to get a lot of good titles, uh, keep up. Folks won't even notice that there's not as many titles. But the um, with the audio visual items, we have those cases, they're expensive. And uh, everything is drop shipped to us, so that includes cataloging and everything. So that's probably the most expensive um, thing that we order. So I feel comfortable with um, staying at fifteen thousand dollars for that. One or two hundred dollars here or there, but those are the biggies.
Patty, I, I noticed that their advertising budget was completely cut. Uh, is there a reason that you decided to do that?
We used to um, order like magnets that we would giveaways or uh, trinkets to advertise for the library, but um, we really do very well with publicizing our events through social media and in-house as well with the traffic that comes in. Um, so we felt comfortable cutting that. We could always add it back next year, but as far as this year, it's probably been two years since I've really ordered something like that.
I, I appreciate that 'cause you're always forward thinking and I was wondering, you know, if you wanted to go a, a little bit towards the social media side of things and it looks like you've done that. Thank you.
Bye.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Thanks.
Mayor, um, we do have lunch and it's, it's ready. Up to you. I just wanted to let you know that lunch is provided and we, it is here and ready.
Well. Uh, it's eleven oh eight. Definitely Police Department lunchtime, but I don't know about the rest of us. Let's tackle the next one first and then.
Up is planning and zoning. All right, um, so um, planning and zoning budget this year um, is, has increased. Like I said, um, most of that, ninety nine percent of that is, as explained prior regarding anticipated permits that are gonna be coming in and our expenditure back to Safe Bill that's gonna be a result of that. At the end of the day though, we do anticipate more revenue from permits than we did in previous years, net revenue. Because we've changed our permit structure, we've increased fees and we've renegotiated our contract with Safe Bill um, from a hundred percent to seventy five percent. So um, that's, that's gonna result in a net increase in revenues, but we do have to show those anticipated expenditures here. Um, kinda going through each of the line items going um, down to some of the legal services, things like that. That's unchanged. Uh, inspector and code enforcement services, we did increase as explained. Um, engineering services, we've accounted for a fifty percent decrease in that. Uh, we do anticipate some charges to go to plan review, kind of, uh, Scott and I are tag teaming on potential uh, plan review as a result of our, the transition for um, our environmental specialist position. Um, a reduction in technical services. Um, pretty much everything else staying the same. Um, uh, do have a little bit more in equipment maintenance and repair and that's just based on last year's expenditures. We did have um, some equipment maintenance for uh, the plotter and different things like that. Um. Postage, I did reduce, although I, I anticipate that we'll have a little bit more postage than we've done in previous years with code enforcement coming back in-house 'cause we're gonna be sending a lot of certified letters. But I don't anticipate too much by way of postage. Um. And um, pretty much everything else has been um, has been a de, a decrease or has stayed the same. So that's long and short of the planning.
Who are the regular employees?
Regular, okay, uh, planning commission. So um, planning commission does get paid, so we do have uh, regular employees and uh, part-time employees. Uh, regular employees is gonna be me and the code enforcement position. Part-time employees are gonna be planning commission. Uh, so. Did I say planning commission twice there?
You said it. You flip flopped it, but we, I think we all knew what you meant.
Regular is me and code enforcement, part-time is planning commission. So um, and then I.
Part of your salary is included in this, but.
Yes, yes. And um, and when it comes to our, uh, 'cause our training and travel budget for planning and zoning is larger than most other departments and that is 'cause I cover training and travel for some of the planning commissioners and their training as well. So.
Thank you.
We're just noticing all the insurance inflation numbers. I mean, it's, it's like every insurance line is very.
Yeah, and the uh, you, you'd mentioned the uh, the Harbin Agency. So they actually got back to us after they did their, their study and they said, you're, you're better off to stay with who you're with. Um, they did wanna talk to me about workers comp, um, and I haven't scheduled that meeting yet. They thought they could get us a little bit lower. Yeah, so it was worth going through the, through the process, uh, but yeah, it just, uh, just is kinda.
Thank you, Philip.
I think that does it for the departmental budgets. Uh, what's coming up next are your, your SPOLOST budget reviews, uh, sewer budget review, um.
On will item number ten take Philip and Scott? Go for.
Okay, counsel. Um, we're gonna do the two thousand seventeen SPOLOST budget first. Um. We had a uh, decrease in the cost of the roundabout from what we were estimating it to be. Um, so there was a nine hundred thousand dollar savings there. So we've redistributed those funds and we'll talk about that real quick so you know where they're, where we're proposing them to go. Um, sixty thousand of it was gonna go to a uh, car for PD, um, to supply them with another vehicle. Uh, two hundred and fifty thousand was slotted for road paving and repair to help supplement um, L-MIG and um, reduce some of the burden on the general fund for the paving stuff. Uh, let's see. Two point six million of it is going to the roundabout. Um, other debt expenses is the uh, GTIB loans at two hundred thousand. And then the uh, Hanley Park improvements is the bathroom down at the soccer fields at three hundred and fifty thousand. Any questions on that?
Is that three fifty just for the bathrooms?
Yes, ma'am. Bathroom and a small drain field.
Totally, if I remember right, the design that's been, the last design I saw was, it was two restrooms, a small storage area cut out, uh, we, we, based on a conversation a long time ago with you all, we, we decided not to do a full concession stand, but we were gonna do a area for vending. Cupboard area for a couple of picnic tables. So it's.
Like the soccer side.
Right, on the soccer. So it's a little bit more than just a couple of bathrooms, but it is a much more uh, smaller scope than what had originally started when the seventeen SPOLOST came out.
With that, we'll move into the twenty twenty-three SPOLOST. Uh, the big things with the twenty twenty-three SPOLOST, you'll see uh, there's sewer line repair and maintenance. Um, money being requested for that. That's to do uh, the sewer um, manhole projects that's coming up and some other things like that. Cover some of those expenses. Uh, that's why you also will later see it reduced in the sewer budget. The sewer capacity, I went ahead and just put five hundred thousand to that, um, just in case that door needs to be opened. Um, we have a little bit of money there to talk and negotiate, do things that we need to do. Um, but right now, I don't think, unless Brandon, you feel otherwise, I don't believe we're gonna have to really spend that, but we want it there in case we need it. Um, once again, some more money for road paving and repair. Um, there is uh, money set aside for the dams at four hundred thousand. Um, that is primarily for Hanley Dam. Hanley is gonna be the one that's gonna start first 'cause Adams Lake has a long um, land acquisition uh, process coming up on it. So I don't anticipate that actually starting next FY. Uh, we, hopefully we'll get through the land ac, acquisition by then is our goal. If we can get it out and start bidding it and stuff like that, then I, then of course we'll do that and we'll, we'll figure it out from there and see where we can make it up. Because at that point, like the roundabout may not be at the full two point six million yet. So, uh, that's uh. Let's see what else was in there. So, Hanley Park dam improvements, we'll talk about that. The Shamrock Park dam improvement, there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars slated for that. Um, that's just in case we do get to the point where we can start doing the tree project. Um, we'll start looking at that, at that time. And then the equipment is for the carryover for the bucket truck, the one hundred and fifty. Questions?
Capacity. Some point, you're gonna have five hundred thousand dollars. How we would need that if.
Once you get to a certain percentage in your capacity, that's when you start looking and doing that and negotiating that, setting up those contracts and things like that. So like I said, this is, this is just kinda carrying from some of the stuff from the past. We keep carrying it over. Because it's, it, remember this is SPOLOST money. It's not like the general fund. It's, it's different. So we try to anticipate and put something in there a little bit. Um, like I said, just in case something comes up and we need it. And sewer expansion doesn't necessarily have to be a hundred percent to capacity, to the capacity. It could be used for, if we, you know, decide that we want to extend the line from partners down to the intersection at Sonoya and Palmetto or something like that. Um, it could be used for something like that. Uh, but right now, it's, it's pretty much just a placeholder.
Along those same lines, if the Camp Creek uh, treatment facility is, is expanded and we have to pay a portion of that where does that exist on here?
That's coming out of the sewer enterprise fund.
Once that, once that Camp Creek process gets more in the works and we know what we're looking at and, and what we're able to buy.
looking at, and what we're able to buy from them as far as capacity, then the capacity number would- cost expansion. Our goal is, looking forward for the town, you know, our long-term goal is to, to see a million gallons per day in capacity for the town. Have a safe number, so.
At this time and date, do we have enough of sewer capacity to serve both the Scarborough properties on Palmetto and Tyrone Road? We do? Okay.
And that, that number that you were talking about earlier with Ms. Whalen is approximately 70%.
70, 75%, yes, sir.
70, 75, and we're currently at-
I think it's-
We're getting close, on paper. So, so when you consider the neighborhoods that Ms. Farr mentioned, you consider East Group, Microsoft, which isn't going to be a huge draw, but when you-
Blots and Southampton-
Right.
That are not good along.
When you consider all that, and you consider, we now safely feel like we have 650,000 gallons versus 400,000 gallons because of the situation with Fulton and Fairburn, we're better off than we, than we were in the past. But, but yeah, taking all that into account, we're, we're probably in the 60s, on paper. Daily, we're 150, 200,000 gallons per day. So, actual use. Right, because we have, we have, we have capacity that is spoken for, but not yet built out.
Okay, there was a page two to that, I'm sorry. So, there's a Hanley Park improvements for the parking lot that we're looking at, trying to get that going. At 300,000, there was a Dorthia Redwine improvement, $200,000 to do some draining improvements in there. And some of the things that we could do, like the playground, as far as the land there when they remove the, the playground, that kind of stuff. And then at Fable and Brown, we have 50,000 set aside to do some work. In that parking lot, we want to change the cuts into the, through the curb to get up, to transition up into a gravel parking lot up in there. And we also are trying to look at seeing bring water across the street, so we can get water near the dog park section.
All right, and it, on the agenda, it says Scott and Philip, is this, you're presenting for the two of you, or Philip, are you wanting to cover something?
No, it's just if, if there was any extra questions regarding any of the, particularly some of the SPOLOST park projects, and, you know, Hanley, Shamrock, if you had any questions, I'm available to talk about that.
All right, for the sewer fund, this is the enterprise fund, so its budget is, is a little easier to work around also. Biggest increase was in professional services, a $1,500 increase there. That's just a, $1,000 doesn't go as far as it used to, and it's been that way for a while. So that's there for when we need help. The engineering services went up slightly. We still have some work to do with getting standard details and some things like that. There is a, let's see what else is down here. On the natural gas line item, I believe there's a typo there. It shows $175. I think that's supposed to be more like 1750, but we'll, we'll rectify that. And then you'll also see the sewer fees at $300,000 at Fulton, that includes both the fees that we pay them for treating the water, plus the capital improvement, facility expansion fees. And that's pretty much it. You can see we, we did a major, a major reduction on it, at 56% change, drop on that budget. Now, we do have the, just so you know, we do have the sewer line repair bill that will come in from the force main issue we had in Rivercrest, but that was all in this FY, so you'll see that money coming out of this FY, and that's why it's not in the-
Andy, how long do we have to spend 2017 SPOLOST dollars?
As long as you're working towards it, sorry, there's no deadline, as long as you're working towards it every year. I mean, if you still had it 20 years later, they might come back and say something, but as long as we're working towards it, we're good.
That was really all we had on the agenda there, the smaller funds, the tree fund. I, I should have prompted the chief to talk about the drug, the, the two drug funds during his presentation, but I'll pull the drug fund, the state drug fund. Funds carried forward with $7,000, we don't anticipate any new funding in there, but that's just funds carried forward. And he put all that towards small equipment in that budget. Federal drug fund, kind of the same thing, no anticipation of new revenue, I don't believe, just funds carried forward, well, interest revenue of $25. And he has put that towards uniforms, ammunition, and small equipment, all good uses for that.
And that used to be such a good resource for us, who gets that money now?
Well, it's, a lot has changed, there's been a lot of reforms in law enforcement about seizure of assets. It's not as easy as it used to be to do. And then where, where we benefited the most from it was when the Fayette County Sheriff's Office had the Drug Task Force, and every agency in the county had someone assigned to that task force, and we would get a portion of everything that was seized. And what really benefited us was that our task force was assigned to the Atlanta-area DEA. So anytime the DEA had something big going on regionally, or at least in the, in the metro Atlanta area, our guys would be a part of that, and so we would get exposure to opportu- funding opportunities like this, or seizure opportunities. That might happen in College Park, or Conyers, or somewhere like that, because we were also attached to the DEA. So all of that went away over the last few years when, kind of, downsized the, the task force, and I don't know if anybody has, has a, I don't know if any of our sister cities have someone assigned to the Drug Task Force anymore. I know our Drug Task Force is no longer attached to the federal side, so all that's kind of dried up. But you're right, there was a period of time we had around $650,000 in our drug fund.
I think it'd be up now with all that stuff they're talking about that's come across the border.
Well, it is, I mean, if you're, if you're working at the federal level, or some state agencies, or larger police agencies, yeah, that's still there. They're just making it harder in the courts to seize. It used to be, if you did a raid, or a traffic stop, or whatever, you found a lot of cash, you found drugs, and, and you could prove that the cash was associated with the drugs, the seizure was pretty easy. But due to some reforms that happened a few years ago, there's a lot more that you have to do to make those seizures, and a lot of courts, not necessarily around here, but a lot of courts nationwide, are just making it a lot harder to, to- Well, like I said, that's all, it's on the agenda, if there's anything, what's the tree fund? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the tree fund.
So real quickly, for the tree fund, basically, there's not much to say about it, other than we are expecting, when development happens, to get more money for trees, because they tend to use the tree fund. And as we do our enhancements in our parks and along the Sonoya Road landscaping stuff with the LCI, streetscaping, that we'll be using that money to plant trees and things like that at that time.
Any questions?
Are we getting a new tree out here in the parking lot again? It died again.
Yes, ma'am.
That was actually part of the streetscaping, it was one of the extra trees that we couldn't plant in the streets, streetscaping. We do have a landscape warranty on that tree, so we're going, Curtis is working on that one.
All, um, why don't we turn?
Could have a couple of things for staff comment, though. Real quick. What's that? Oh, public comments. When you're ready, sir.
I'm sorry, it was, I jumped the gun.
All right, so just real quick, so an extension of this conversation, our next step in the budget process is the, the required public hearing and then the adoption. To give us enough time to make sure everything's aligned, and you, you guys didn't have any, hardly any changes based on today, so we could theoretically do the public hearing on the, do we have enough time to advertise it for the first meeting? What I had planned was to do the public hearing on the, during the regular meeting on June 19th at 7:00, and then do a special called meeting the following, on the week, on the 26th at 9:00 a.m., which would be just a quick meeting to come in and approve the budget. Okay, if they're-
For June 5th?
Right, so the alternative would be, we could do the public hearing during your regular meeting on the 5th at 7:00, and then you could approve it on the 19th at 7:00, and you wouldn't have to do a called meeting. If that's what you guys prefer, then we will make that happen today.
Sounds good.
Yes.
That, that covers that. And then the next thing, as a result of our sewer issue that we had, the sewer main break that we had a couple of weeks ago, one of the things that EPD asked us to do is, is one year of monitoring. And so we've, we've reached out to ISE to do that work, and it's going to be $9,750 to do one, one year of monitoring on that. That would of course come out of the sewer enterprise fund. Because it was an emergency response, and because EPD asked us to make sure this is what we were doing, we had to go ahead and get them started on that, so we're just asking you to ratify that decision. And I have the work authorization here if you'd like to see it, but yeah, it's $9,750 for one year of monitoring. Yes, sir, $9,750.
Are we allowed to vote at this meeting?
I make a motion that we approve the $9,750 for the one year of monitoring. Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Is that it?
Well, we have.
I just have a quick comment I wanted to-
I'm sorry, can I-
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm looking at the calendar again, I think I might have messed up. I'm not sure we do have enough time. If I, help me, when, when do we have to have it to the paper in order to get it into Wednesdays? Does it have to be on Thursday? We do it by today?
Y'all can do it by today, then, yeah, if, if, I mean, that's-
We had a few things, I have a few things, we've got to double check our numbers, but-
Oh, yeah, that's right, we have to have the numbers right before we do the advertisement, because we have to publish the budget.
Well, it's not technically budget, published, but we have to tell them where to go to, and so it needs to be out there so that they can see it.
And we're not allowed to do both public hearings on the, on the same?
Right.
We can't, yeah.
Well, there's only one public hearing for this, it's, you have to do two public hearings for the millage rate change, but the budget's only one public hearing, but you, you can't do the approval-
On the same day?
Right. Right, yeah, so you could, I guess you could theoretically do the public hearing at a special called meeting at, say, 6 o'clock on the, on the 15th, or the, whatever the second meeting is, the 19th.
I don't, does it like for us to do public hearings at 6?
Probably not. It, it, in this case, it would probably be safer to go back to what I said originally, do the pu- the public hearing on the 19th at your regular meeting, and then do the adoption at a special called meeting on the, at 9:00 a.m. later.
19th and 26th?
That's what it was, yes.
Yes.
That would, that would give us, that would make sure that we have plenty of time to make sure the numbers are complete and ready to go. So I would propose then, go back to the 19th at 7:00 for the public hearing, and the 26th at 9:00 a.m. for adoption.
Would we be able to get a copy of the revised?
Yes, as soon as we get it done, we'll, we'll email y'all, and then we'll of course get it published for the public as well. All right, everybody comfortable with that on staff side? Okay, we'll, we'll go back to that. Sorry, y'all, I, I was hoping we could make that work, but, um-
I just, Scott and Philip, I just wanted to compliment you on your Tyrone 1-on-1 presentation the other night, you guys did a great job. It's not exactly the most exciting topic to be discussing, but I think you did a great job, Scott, you really did, and you had some good feedback from the people there.
And I did want to just give a heads up that the permit for the pavilion has been issued, and they're probably going to start some construction and different land disturbance activities in the park starting next week.
Nice.
I'd like, I'd just like to say that whoever did the landscaping around the Tyrone sign down toward Peachtree City did an excellent job, it looks fabulous. I haven't seen the one up here.
It looks nice up there, I passed it last night, yesterday.
That was A Abbey, they did, they did a really good job on that.
A Abbey did it, huh? Looks great.
Yeah, it was designed by Kekin Wood, and then A Abbey did the construction.
So, someone who thought they knew what they were doing, and I remember thinking that they know more than I do, but I don't remember who it was, made the comment that on the northern gateway, there are two of the trees are going to end up obstructing the view to the sign. So, on the north side of the sign, there are two trees that will end up obstructing the view to the sign.
Right.
Does that make sense? Correct, out of Fairburn. And, and I just thought, that's out of my wheelhouse, but I'll mention it. If, if they're going to be a problem, we can move them before they really take good root.
I'll have to look at it. It was designed by a landscape architect, and-
I, but I wasn't-
Installed by a professional landscape company, so-
But I wasn't, I wasn't going to tell the guy, "Well, you don't know what you're talking about, it was stall, it was designed by-"
I would have, but-
I know you would have.
Understand, I know what you're saying.
I don't.
No, we will look at it, and, and I will have Tyler, the, the architect, look at it also, or, or I'll, I'll have, we'll have a discussion with him, and we'll, we'll look at it. But I, I, if the tree's getting, based on, you know, I've looked at that site a couple of times, if the trees are getting taller over time, I don't see how it would, if it's not obstructing now-
Seems like it would just be the trunk, as opposed to the foliage. I don't know, I'm just-
Gotcha, that's the messenger.
We'll look at it, yep.
I have, I have two comments that I would like to make. The, the first is a thought about a way to potentially save a little bit of money for our street improvement. I know I've talked to Philip about this before, but the, what would it take for us to plant younger trees earlier in the process, before we get to the streetscape improvement process? Because at that time, they cost less, and then over time, they grow and they become more mature, so by the time we get to doing some of the hardscape along the, that corridor, the trees would, would mature to a point that we couldn't afford to pay for a much more mature tree.
Yeah, so if, if we wanted to pursue that strategy, I don't think we'd be able to do that in most of the areas of streetscaping, but we could take a look at that in areas we know are not going to be disturbing the land where the trees are going. So Shamrock Park kind of comes to mind as one of those locations where we could, you know, we could plant smaller trees, you know, because we've got so much more room to work with, the streetscape plan, if we come back through with modifications, it may not disturb the areas that we would have planted some of those trees. So, we can look into that for some of the areas we think the trees would not be disturbed, and we can maybe stretch our tree fund dollars there.
Okay, and I, I agree with that, because I've, I've seen this happen in several locations, and what ends up happening, especially on like, street trees and things like that, you find out that there's utilities that get moved, and they start doing damage to the trees you just planted, and all that kind of stuff. And a fine example, too, is just, we moved the pavilion, the location of the pavilion, so if we had planted trees based off of that beforehand, and we moved the pavilion to where it is now, we probably would have been removing trees that we just planted. So it takes, it takes a good bit of prior planning and, and sticking to your plans if you're going to do that kind of stuff, which, which we can do. So it takes, it takes a good bit of prior planning and, and sticking to your plans, if you're gonna do that kinda stuff, um, which we, which we can do. So, uh, but along the streets and stuff, I'd, I'd probably hold off on those.
Okay. And then the second thing that I would like to ask is, um, uh, I've been, uh, hoping for this for a long time, so I'm just gonna go ahead and ask for it right now. Is there a way for staff to, to begin to look at the idea of bringing a farmer's market to Tyrone?
We've actually been contacted by somebody who wants to do something similar to that, or trying to kind of maybe sync them up with the food truck park. So, that's something that we've, we've gotten contacted about, and we're gonna try and, try and coordinate with this individual to maybe partner with the DDA more specifically, and do something at the food truck park.
Okay, um, is there, is there, I would like to be involved in some capacity with, with the thought of bringing a, a farmer's market to Tyrone, because, um, you know, gardening is my thing. I think many of you know that, and Jessica as well. And I do, uh, go to several of the area farmer's markets, and, um, I think this would be, you know, fantastic, um, idea to, to bring it here and to keep it going consistently, um, in whatever capacity that we could get. So is there a way just to look and, and to see if this would cost us something? Because I think that it can generate some, um, some additional revenue for the town, too, when you rent out those spaces for people to sell produce.
Yeah, the, um, the gentleman I talked to, it would not be something that would cost the town anything. If anything, he, he would be potentially leasing some space, or whatever, some sort of agreement, uh, with either the town or the DDA, depending on where he goes. But I can, I can loop you into that conversation. It's a, it's a husband and wife, they, um, have a bakery in Saranby, and they have a mobile bakery that they have, like, a food truck for. And they have been interested in doing something here, if we have the space or the facilities to, you know, that. So, we can, I can loop you into that conversation, if you'd like.
And even if we don't use an outside vendor, is it possible for our Parks and Rec office to be involved in thinking about something like this as well?
We'd, we'd want them involved, I, I, you know, some, some of these, you know, very regular markets, there's a lot of administrative work that goes behind the scenes, so I wouldn't wanna burden them too heavily with something like that, but they would certainly be involved from, you know, coordination perspective, if it was happening in the parks and stuff. But we can, we can kind of look at, you know, logistically, how we, we marry those things together.
I have one question for council, if you don't mind. I was approached by a woman named Celeste, um, who would like to present to council, if you would like to see this presentation, on a program called Her Plan. It is a, a pregnancy, unexpected pregnancy support program, and also life assistance for, helps them after the baby's born. So they wanna come in and just let you know what they do in the community, they work with our local Fayette County Pregnancy Center and other agencies, and, and the Susan B. Anthony, which is a national program, um, for supporting life and life issues. So, her, I wanted, I did speak to her, and I said, you'd have to gear it towards how it would be applicable for us as a town to make this information available. So I just, was, wanted to get a temperature reading, if you all would like her to come in and make a presentation.
What would be the difference between them presenting, like, doing the presentation part of our agenda, or just coming up, doing public comment, and taking that, that time to present?
Uh, my, my difference, from my perspective, is she'd get three minutes or ten minutes.
Okay, so it's just the time?
From my perspective.
I've seen her presentation a couple of times, and it's about ten minutes.
So, we'll be on the presentation portion of the agenda?
I, I just, my thing is, it's, I know, like, our public safety officers would probably run across someone in a crisis situation, and they would have this resource to say, hey, I've got this information. And that, or even if they came in to see Ciara or Dee, and, you know, just, just to have, even like we have in our bathroom, a sign, if you're being sex trafficked, well, if you have an unexpected pregnancy, here's a resource, something to save these babies. That's my hope, save a child. All right, hearing no objections, I will contact her, thank you. Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, um... Other council comments? Motion to adjourn, and then, once I get that motion, we vote, I'm gonna ask Ms. Whalen, if she will pray for us. So I have it so moved, all in favor?
Aye.
Father, we thank you for your presence here today, guiding us and giving us wisdom, and we thank you for all the department heads and administrative teams that have worked together and collaborated to, to bring us a balanced budget. And we just ask your blessings on our town, on our finances, that you would, you would bring in the sources that we need, the resources to fund things for our citizens that are critical to them having a joyful life in our town. And we ask you to bless this food to the nourishment of our bodies, that we could do more work for you, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.